I want to welcome everybody to our board meeting. You can see the officers before us up here. And of course, this is a special night tonight because we will have two new board members coming on board. Well, one new board member and one returning board member. So with that, and of course, the administration is here with us also tonight. With that, we will go ahead and start with our pledge of allegiance. If you all would please rise. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now the Texas flag. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible. For those that still can't, if you could please remain standing for a moment of silence. Alright, you may be seated. Thank you. We'll go right on ahead into e, commendations and recognitions. Dr. Fagan.
Thank you. Tonight's inspiring moment is a collection of special memories from the 2018-2019 school year. This video features a sampling of awards, recognitions, and activities that our students, staff, and community experienced together.
Hi, it's me again, Samuel Tarkington. You may remember at the beginning of the school year, we were getting ready to celebrate UMBLE ISD's 100th year anniversary. It was a year of fun for sure. We had a community pep rally, a winner showcase at The Bender. We dressed up like we were 100 years old. And we had a huge celebration with live music, Joel Osteen, and a major fireworks display. So, here we are. It's the end of the square and it's time to celebrate. Check this out. Well, that pretty much caps off another extraordinary year in UMBLE ISD. I'm looking forward to the middle school experience next year. Have a great summer and see you on the flip side. Keisha.
I would like to recognize the star of our video, Samuel Tarkington. There he is. Samuel is looking forward to being a sixth grader at Creekwood Middle School, playing saxophone in the Creekwood Band. Great job, Samuel. I think theater might be in your future, so congratulations. Our superstaffers will return in October as our many UMBLE ISD staff members are on a well-deserved summer break. So, congratulations to all of them and that well-earned break, it's going to be a little shorter than usual. So, we'll see them back in October.
Doctor Fagan. Alright, thank you, Dr. Fagan. Next, we'll be moving into our questions and comments by patrons or employees of the district regarding agenda items or any other matters. The board encourages comments from our citizens, the district, district employees, anyone wishing to speak. Please get the form in the back, get it over to our board secretary, Ms. Martin. Hadn't gotten one. In the meantime, we will go ahead and start with our first speaker, and that will be Ms. Paulina Storm. Are you here? Alright, if you can come up and to the podium. Yeah, just from right there, yes ma'am, go ahead.
So, dear UMBLE ISD school board members, my name is Paulina Strom and I'm the parent of two future UMBLE ISD students and a resident of the Fall Creek community. I'm here on behalf of the UMBLE ISD parents who want to see our children succeed in external school. According to the UMBLE ISD website, learning other languages is an important skill for the 21st century. The parents here tonight are aware of the benefits of dual language and Spanish immersion programs, and we want more opportunities for our children to obtain the benefits of being 100% bilingual and belligerent. Research shows that bilingual people have an easier time developing strong thinking skills and using logic as compared to their non-bilingual peers. Being bilingual supports children in maintaining strong ties in their families, culture, and community, which are key parts of child developing identity. Bilingual children are also able to make new friends and create strong relationships using their second language, an important skill in our increasing diverse society. One half to two-thirds of adults around the world speak at least two languages, which provides them with more job opportunities in the global workspace. Currently, there are three different UMBLE ISD language programs. First, the bilingual late exit program. The main purpose of this program is for the native Spanish-speaking students to learn English. This program is a tool to help English language learners succeed in English, but the program does not promote bilingualism and does not have an opportunity to earn the seal of bili literacy, which is an award that recognizes students who have studied and attained proficiency in two or more languages. The second program is the two-way dual language program. The goal of the dual language program is to help students become bilingual, belligerent, and bicultural while promoting high academic achievement. And the program provides students an opportunity to obtain the seal of bili literacy. Despite the many advantages of the program, it is only offered at one of the 28 elementary schools in the district, and it only serves 0.3% of the kindergarten and student population. Additionally, transportation logistics are an issue for families, so very few parents apply. The third program is the Spanish immersion program, or SIP. The language enrichment program takes English-speaking students and provides Spanish language instruction to them in core academic content areas. The program provides an opportunity to obtain the seal of bili literacy. The program is only offered at three of the 28 elementary schools and requires parental commitment in teaching English language arts at home. However, many parents do not have the background to teach English language arts and do not feel comfortable assuming their responsibility, so they do not apply for the program. The current setup of the program limits the diversity in the classroom and limits opportunities for Hispanic and bicultural families to acquire a second language. Language enrichment programs can have a powerful impact on the academic success of our students. So, we are approaching you, the board, at the end of the school year to be proactive in communicating that we think it is important for our children to acquire a second language. We would like UMBLE ISD to use the 2019-2020 school year to plan for the expansion of more language enrichment programs to be launched in 2020. We would also like to see UMBLE ISD vision and mission regarding language enrichment programs being implemented district-wide. UMBLE ISD administration has stated that enrichment programs are only implemented in schools when the principal requested. We believe that an awareness campaign for the principals and all teachers would help show them the value of these programs and what it does for their students, which would result in more principals appreciating and requesting the programs in all schools, not just the new ones. Our petitions and requests are, first, offer dual language programs in all bilingual schools in the district; two, offer Spanish immersion programs in more monolingual schools and include English language arts as part of the curriculum starting in first grade with the 90-10 model, beginning with the Fall Creek community. UMBLE ISD's parents have collected over 320 signatures from online and physical petitions from the UMBLE ISD families who are in support of requesting more opportunities for their children to become 100% bilingual and belligerent, some of which are here today. And other parents are available to assist district administration in evaluating what makes most sense as a first step. Thank you for your time, service, and consideration in this important matter. Sincerely, the UMBLE ISD parents seeking enrichment programs for second language acquisition.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Strom. Or do we, do we have any more? Yes, yes, please do. And while she's doing that, are there any more comments from the, from patrons? Okay. Once again, thank you. Next, we'll go ahead and move into our comments from individual board members, and I will start to my left with Ms. Lamond Dixon.
Okay, first of all, I would like to say to Samuel Tarkington, great job. And I love seeing all the wonderful things and all the great accomplishments that are happening throughout the district. Great video also by Jonathan Fry and the rest of the communications team. And to Ms. Paulina, I just wanted to say thank you for sharing about the language expansion. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. This is Ms. Conrad.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also would like to congratulate Samuel. Nice job there with your acting. It's nice to kind of see that wrapped up in the, you forget what all happens in the, accumulates over the year. So, it's a very successful year for us, so thanks for the reminder. And Ms. Paulina, we appreciate you coming and speaking on behalf of the parents here, and we'll continue to work with the administration to assess our programs and opportunities that we provide for students. Other than that, I just, I may go to welcome our newest board members this evening, so congratulations to you, and we look forward to working with you.
Ms. Conrad, Mr. Sitten.
I'll reserve comments for later in the agenda.
Alright, sir, thank you. Ms. Morrison.
Samuel, I think you did an awesome job again. Way to go. What a great summation of the year. We've, we've obviously done a great deal of things. Also, Paulina, thank you very much. Being a person, being a former principal of a Spanish immersion school, it excites, it's very exciting.
Alright, thank you, Ms. Morrison. And I also will reserve my comments for later on, so we will pass it over to comments by the administration.
Thank you. It has been a fantastic year, as you saw in the video, and also, it's a very busy summer with all of the work we're doing on buildings because a lot of people say, oh, you know, you all have the summers off, right? And that's, that's not exactly true. We, we do a lot of professional development during the summer. Our staff take that opportunity to learn and grow, do interesting things. We do a lot of building maintenance and improvements and construction during the summer. We do a lot of hiring. I believe Rick has over 300 positions hired so far. And we also have to settle one budget, open another budget, to start a brand-new fiscal year on July 1st. So, it's a very busy time for everyone, and I just want to say, take a minute to say thank you to all the members of my team who are working at incredible pace to get all of these things done and move the, the school year, getting ready for a brand-new school year to start and, and getting ready for all those pieces and parts. As a, on the side note, one of the things that UMBLE ISD aspires to do that I think is really important in education is, and that is to collect information from students about what kind of programs that they want. So, whether it's CATE classes, or whether it's high school offerings, or middle school electives, or dual language, Spanish immersion, et cetera, I believe that we aspire to meet the needs of students. To collect information about the programs that people want, to do an analysis of our district-wide space, as well as personnel, and then to locate those programs and opportunities in the places that we can and meet students' needs. And so, it's not always perfect and ideal, but our goal is to work with each and every family to find the programs and resources that they desire to meet their children's needs. And so, we are happy to continue that process and that practice of collecting that information and then locating programs where, where we can and where they're needed to meet all of our students' needs, whether it's a cosmetology program or a, or a Spanish immersion program. So, that, that's sort of one of our, our values as a culture. It's the way we staff our schools, it's the way we move programs around in the district, and we're going to continue to do that in the best interest of our students and staff. So, I wanted to make sure that we just sort of had that conversation. So, if anyone has, has a desire for a particular program or need for their children, I would encourage you to work with your principal and/or teachers or whoever you feel comfortable with, and if not, please contact us during the summer. We're happy to work with you on those things also.
Alright, thank you, Dr. Fagan. Next, we'll move into our board associations and committees reports and audit, audit committee. I will report that the audit committee is looking forward to getting their work for the next year in place. I wanted to also point out, one of our audit committee members is here, I mean, one of our audit people are here. Where's these, I saw her earlier. Oh, there she is, Crystal, Crystal, now Sean's out here tonight. Crystal Carter is doing great work. And so, we will be meeting as soon as the president realigns the audit committee to see who's on there so that we can get the work for the following school year, very soon. And that's it from the audit committee. Board building, board and superintendent evaluation committee.
Well, since I'm the only one here tonight from that committee, okay. My fellow friends, and looking forward to the new ones. We will come in at tonight. Tonight is superintendent evaluation, which will be done later on this evening.
Okay, thank you. Building and planning committee, Ms. Lamond Dixon.
Yes, well, I did send out the meeting, board building and planning summary to all of you. I don't know if you have any questions. I think that we'll talk about a few things probably when we are voting on the agenda. That's it.
Okay, finance committee chair, Mr. Sitten.
Lot of moving parts. We're going to look at compensation tonight and hopefully move forward with that. And next Tuesday night, hopefully adopt our new budget. So, we've met once a week now, it seems like for the last month or two, but we too will get to go on Christmas, go on Christmas. Go on, go on summer break at some point in time. But with all the moving parts from HB3, we'll talk more about that in a little bit.
Alright, thank you to Mr. Sitten, Ms. Morrison on the advocacy committee.
As almost all of you know, HB3 was signed into law today. So, hopefully, we can get going now with that budget next week. So, at this present time, that's it.
Let's see here, Kingwood Super Neighbourhood Council, Ms. Lamond Dixon.
Yes, Kingwood Super Neighbourhood Council, the last meeting, Beth Walters was there. She's from the Harris County Flood Control. She gave an update on ditch cleaning in Kingwood. And other than that, the next meeting is August 21st. So, definitely off for the summer. That's it.
Okay, and so, we'll go with the Education Foundation. Where is, yeah, there she is. Anything to report? Out of her right now. Okay, that's good. Okay, next, now we're going to go ahead and move into our oath of office for our elected trustees. And we have three trustees that we'll be giving the oath to. I do want to add that they've already been sworn in. That was done yesterday. All the paperwork was signed yesterday, but we want to do a ceremonial swearing-in. And so, we will start with our incumbent, Ms. Morrison, as we go to swear her hands. Ms. Morrison, if you will, go to the front. And I get all your folks together. Who's going to be swearing you in? Okay. Okay. That's good. Nancy, you want to take your glasses off the top of your head? You're still, still a principal. Take them glasses off. Take them off. Congratulations, Nancy. Next, we'll have in position two, Mr. Robert Scarfall, former board member. Mr. Scarfall, if you will, come with your folks. He's posing. Give it to, and Mr. Martin, he's our former past president, Mr. Dave Martin, City Council member. Good to see you, Dave.
Try this again. In the name of the authority of the state of Texas, I, Robert John Scarfall, in the name, by the authority of the state of Texas, I, Robert John Scarfall, solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute the office of UMBLE ISD trustee of the state of Texas, test of my ability and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States of this state. Help me God, and you will not take a bribe.
Mr. Scarfall, if you will, please, please take a seat over here next to Mr. Sitten here. Got to hurry. We haven't rearranged yet. Okay. Yes, I do, I do. Ms. Toomey, if you will come with your folks. And... Okay, and who's got, okay, Karen. Get them, get them situated.
Anywhere you like. We are.
Get them situated.
Get to come back up here.
Yes, before we move into our
Yeah, before we move in.
To our next action item here. After we do the officer selection, then you can swap everything. Yes. No, don't stay, this, this, this won't take long. Seating doesn't matter right now, just, y'all pick a seat. Alright. Doesn't matter, yeah.
Getting ready to move.
We're getting ready to get moved again. Alright. We now declare all offices to be vacant, and now our next action item will be the, let me get back over here where I'm at. Oh, yeah, the selection of board officers. And first up would be disposition of president. And do I have a motion? Nation, motion?
I move to approve the selection of the board trustees officers for the 2019-2020 school year as follows. Nancy Morrison as president, Robert Sitten as vice president, Martina Lamond Dixon as secretary, Angela Conrad as parliamentarian.
Alright, we've got a motion. Do I have a second? All in favor, let it be known. All opposed by the same. Congratulations, Ms. Morrison. Alright, if you, if you'd like, five-minute breaks for pictures and stuff.
Yeah, we're going to take a five-minute break for pictures and family.
Where we're sitting.
That's all.
Well, it's good to be back. Okay, our next uh, action item is.
Uh, Madam President, before you start, may I have a point of order please?
You certainly may.
Uh, I just wanted just to uh, first of all say congratulations uh, to you. Uh, I also wanted to say to Dr. Fagan and uh, and, and your staff and team that I appreciate this year. I mean, it was a, you know, we had some, some exciting times, but it was good and I appreciate the professionalism of everyone that was involved and you made, made my job a, a whole lot easy. And of course with the board uh, that's here. And last but not least, I want to welcome our two new board members. Mr. Scarfo, welcome back. Good to see you sir. And Lori, looking forward to working with you. So uh, and thank you Madam President for letting me uh, say that.
You are more than welcome and at this time, if the new board, board members would like to say anything or if anybody else would like to say anything, we'll just go down the list. Um, member Mr. Scarfo?
Thank you and it's uh, nice to be back. And I just, take just a minute to thank a few people. Uh, there's a lot of them, it's all I. I know I'll leave somebody out, but just a few. Uh, I just want to thank um, all those people who helped uh, at the polling locations, there was a lot of them and uh, that's a hard thing to get people to do. Uh, they're real diehards and they're willing to do that. Uh, so I want to thank each and every one of them. Uh, I want to thank um, Milton and Lonnie, Marilyn, Amy. List goes on and uh, especially my good friend, Mr. White, who really helped me through some tough times when things really were stressed. Uh, he was uh, rock, so I appreciate all he did for me. Just want to thank those folks, my wife Jamie. People tell me, well you got a lot of signs all over the place. I said, well, she, she put signs out, she put the signs together, not only did she put them out. So I want to thank her for that effort and for putting up with me, the, especially the last, last few months. That was not an easy task. Um, and I want to thank my uh, son-in-law Chase, particularly for uh, my grandsons who got to be here tonight and those were two that you saw and now there's four. We just had another one join the, join the group last week, so that, that's nice to welcome him. Um, and that, they were really my motivation for wanting to, to be back here again. Uh, so it was great to have them there. I want to thank my son Alex for all his help on the technological side uh, for me with the website and everything else and all I did uh, online. Uh, I really appreciated his help and guidance. So I just want to thank all those folks and also the, all the folks that came out to vote. It, it was great and I, I really appreciate their effort. My new friends uh, in Fall Creek, it was great to get to know a lot of those folks, so I appreciate them. Uh, and I see a couple of them here. Uh, and just uh, it's just very, very heartwarming uh, all the messages and, and I really appreciate that. Very humbled by it. And it's great to be here. I will work my hardest for each and every one of our students and our stakeholders. And we have a, a great, great staff led by Dr. Fagan. People would ask me on the trail, on the campaign trail, well what do you think about the new superintendent? Well, it's not that, quite that new, she's been here three years now. And I said, well, I, I think she's just doing a great job. And um, contrary to what you might have heard, I'm singing your praises, no, I know, I told you, you know I told you that. But no, I, I would. And, and also too, it's, it's just a great staff across the board from uh, the administrative staff into the campuses, we've got great leaders on our campuses. I, I, some I don't know, but a lot I do know and they just do a great job and I appreciate what they do. And also, you got a great board, there's great people up here. I've worked with many of them in the past. Uh, and I got a chance to work with uh, Ms. Toomey now. Um, so I'm looking forward to it and I'll, I'll stop because I don't want to get accused of, pulling a rod right now. I'm, I'm just teasing. But again, thank you, it's, it's a real privilege and honor to be sitting, sitting here. Thank you.
Ms. Toomey?
So I guess it's my turn. Uh, I just wanted to uh, specifically say thank you to my husband um, who has put up with me through all the last minute, sorry I can't uh, I can't cook dinner tonight because I've got to go to XYZ function uh, for my kids, I know. Yes. Uh, my, my son Zachary who's here tonight, um, my daughter Alexa who's actually at swim camp in Austin this week, so she couldn't join us. Um, they are a wonderful family and without them I wouldn't be able to have this opportunity to serve. Um, I'm very excited, uh, I'll keep this short. I'm just really excited to get to serve along uh, with this, this group up here. Um, with, with Liz, um, Karen Martin who has kept me straight and organized over these, uh, this last month. Um, and, and this wonderful uh, group of board members that I've had the opportunity to um, meet and get to know all of them uh, prior to being elected, but now I really am excited about getting ready to serve with them. Um, and I really want to also thank uh, just really the members of Northeast Houston Baptist Church who prayed for me uh, constantly through the election. It was very important to me to keep the election um, really positive and try not to go negative. I know that some, we've had some past elections that have, that have not been um, quite so positive and I, I just think for the school district as a whole, that, that was a huge um, benefit to our district and the morale of the district to keep everything really positive and I'm excited that our district was able to do that through this election. And uh, let's get to work.
Dixon?
Like to welcome Mr. Scarfo, Ms. Toomey. Um, look forward to working with you both, very excited about that. And congratulations President Morrison. It has a nice ring to it.
Thank you.
Mr. Sitton, it's your turn.
You know, we, we have a, a tremendous history of a, a quality team of eight. Uh, prior to Dr. Fagan, Dr. Sconzo, uh, Mr. Scarfo was here during that tenure. And um, since, we had a really a seamless cha, transition when Dr. Fagan came onboard. Uh, we went to work immediately, portrait of a graduate and so forth and I think we're in a really good place. Uh, and I think it's a great time to welcome two new board members with all the exciting stuff we have going on within UMBL ISD. Uh, you're really coming in at that, that point in time to where Dr. Fagan's been able to evaluate. She's been able to, to look at and meet the folks of the community, find out what our community really wants. And now, like you just said, it's time to go to work. Uh, and I'm, I'm excited to have both of you here. I'm excited to welcome you all as part of our team of eight. And uh, now I'll switch over, Ms. Morrison, congratulations.
Thank you.
Uh, been a long time coming, we're glad to have you. And last but not least, Charles Cunningham. You led uh, this organization, this group for the last year with grace, dignity. Uh, you were prepared and uh, I couldn't have asked for a better president to lead our group this past year. So thank you for your service.
Conrad?
Thank you Madam President. Uh, welcome to our newest members. Uh, glad to see you all join us up here. Congratulations Nancy and Mr. Cunningham. I just want to thank you for your leadership this past year. I, I think I uh, really didn't appreciate it before until I served as president and now I was like, wow, thank you, Mr. President. So I really appreciate it now, but thank you for taking the lead and had a lot of challenges this year, but uh, with your leadership, able to move forward and so we appreciate all your hard work and thank you.
I'm sorry, I've been remiss to not.
You go, you go right ahead.
Mr. Cunningham.
You go right ahead, Ms. Dixon.
Thank you so very much for your leadership this year. It has meant a lot. Um, I've learned a lot from you and I appreciate all of what you've done. Thank you so much.
Dr. Olson's approval.
Okay, well, well I just want to, I just want to say, congratulations you two. I am truly excited. Uh, this has been a great team of eight, it continues to be a great team of eight and I know it will be a seamless team of eight. And I'm very excited for both of you. Uh, Mr. Scarfo, I know you've been here before, you know, but Ms. Toomey, the ride just started tonight, okay? So congrat, congratulations, uh, truly, I'm, I'm very excited, okay? And Mr. Cunningham? Past president? I can't thank you enough for making sure that as vice president, I felt like your right-hand person. You never let me out of the loop, you always had me there and you always had my back. So I just want to say, you definitely are one of the best of the best and I'm so excited that you're at the state level. So, um, would anybody else like to speak? Dr. Fagan?
Thank you. Um, I wanted to say welcome. Uh, I have worked in, as you know, many states and with many boards and uh, and I'm not just saying this because you're all here, but you know, this is definitely a, a different level of governance and leadership. The, it starts at the top, it's just a fact. Uh, it's, you don't have to listen to me, you can look across the country and you can look at the quality of the board and you can look at the quality of the district and there is absolutely a correlation. Um, and in UMBL ISD, uh, as a community, we have been fortunate to have a board that has been focused on what's best for students, who has empowered teachers, who has taken risks when necessary, who has stood their ground other times, uh, but always has been consistent in demonstrating a level of leadership and governance uh, that created stability and also created a place where people of quality desire to be. And we know that that is a, a fact, that great teachers go and work for great principals. And it is also a fact that great district leaders go and work for great superintendents and great boards. And they flee from those that are not. And UMBL ISD has benefited so greatly over our hundred-year history from the quality of the leadership. We are standing on shoulders of giants. They have left us with an incredible opportunity and it is our responsibility to carry it forward in that same vein. And that is what uh, my team and I are absolutely proud to do with your support and uh, and with your governance. So thank you all for being here for, I know that you, that the time that you volunteer and devote to this is great. And you have families that give up a lot, so we want you to know that we sincerely appreciate it and we're here to serve and support the students of the district uh, under your leadership. So thank you.
Thank you. We will go to our next action item, which is uh, committee appointments. I am asking the following board members to serve on the following committees for the 2019-2020 school year. For the Audit Committee, Charles Cunningham is Chair, Angela Conrad and Nancy Morrison. Board and Superintendent Evaluation Committee, Angela Conrad Chair, Robert Sitton, Nancy Morrison. Building and Planning Committee, Robert Sitton Chair, Charles Cunningham and Nancy Morrison. Finance Committee, Nancy Morrison Chair, Robert Sitton, Martina Lamond Dixon. Advocacy Committee, Martina Lamond Dixon Chair, Robert Scarfo and Lori Toomey. Board representation from the Educational Foundation, Robert Scarfo. Kingwood Superhead, Super Neighbourhood Council, Lori Toomey. For the Tasby Delegate and Alternate to the Annual Meeting, I am asking Martina Lamond Dixon to be our delegate and for Lori Toomey to be our alternate. Do I have a motion to approve these committee appointments?
Yes Madam President, I move to approve the committee appointments for 2019-2020 school year.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. All those in favor? All those opposed? Next action item. Closed session. Now bear with me, I've not done this before. Uh, Ms. Conrad?
Yes Madam President, I'm, I move to approve the administration's recommendations of student expulsions as presented I move to approve the administration's recommendations of student expulsions as presented in closed session.
You have a motion? Do we have a second? Oh, I'm sorry, second. All of those in favor? Do we have an abstention? We have one abstention, Mr. Scarfo. Item B, Personnel Recommendations.
Madam President, I move to approve the administration's personnel recommendations as presented in closed session with addendum.
Second.
All of those in favor? And I believe we have an abstention. Now we go to the consent agendas. Approval of the minutes for the regular board meeting on Tuesday, May 14, 2019. That must be consent. Do we have to? We have to do it separately? Okay.
With the minutes.
Oh, that's right. That's right.
We have to pull each of those.
We have to pull each of those. Okay, so we'll pull A and we'll pull B. And C. Thank you. Six D, Goods, Professional Services, Non-Construction Services exceeding $50,000 in the aggregate of $25,000 individually. Six E, 2018-19 Construction and Construction-Related Purchases. Consent. F, 2019-2020 Construction and Construction-Related Purchases. Consent. G, Budget Transfers and Amendments with Increase for Tier's Payment. Consent. H, Bond Fund Transfers and Amendments. I, Tax Refunds. Consent. J, Waiver of PNI. K, Building Envelope Project at Deerwood Elementary and Umbel Elementary. Pull that one. Pull. Technology, or L, Technology, VMware, ELA, Unique Digital Technology Incorporated. Consent. M, Board Authorization, Authorization for Inter-Local Agreements. Amendmentarian? Right. One just a minute. All right. Madam President, I move to approve the consent agenda items B through J and L and M as presented. All of those in favor? We do not have an abstention, correct? Okay. All right. All right. So now we go back to...
Item A.
Six A, Approval of Minutes for the Regular Board Meeting Held on Tuesday, May 14.
Oh, moved?
Second.
All of those in favor? We have an abstention, two, correct. Six B, Approval of Minutes for the Special Meeting Held on Wednesday, May 15, 2019.
Oh, moved?
Second.
All of those in favor? And we have an abstention, two.
I guess I abstain if I'm not there.
Yeah, you abstain if you're not there.
Well, that was just the canvassing.
Approval of Minutes for the Special Meeting Held on Tuesday, May 28.
Oh, moved?
Second.
All of those in favor? Okay, I need to correct one on the canvassing of the votes. There should only be, because I was not there. Yeah.
That was just Charles.
That was just Charles and Mr. Sitten, so that should only be two.
Okay, only two abstentions or?
Right.
May 28, May 15.
May 15.
I'm saying on the 28, though, I have to finish that one.
Right. Sorry about that, but... Well, I should abstain for May 15 because I was not there for the canvassing of the votes. Oh, okay.
Because Board Docs doesn't know that it failed.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay, so...
I abstained.
So, okay. 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 All right, we're good. All right. So, yeah, so our yeses work. Okay. Okay. No, that's all right because I'm...
I was already there in my mind, thank you.
Okay. So we did A, B, and C, and then we have another pull.
K.
K.
Oh, moved?
Second.
And there are questions? Or?
My question is, $2 million? Well, Nolan could give a lot more information, but initially, this was sort of supposed to be just basic maintenance and upgrade of the building's watertightness. Kenny, you can correct me when I get off script here. But because that has been deferred for many years, the actual need of the buildings far exceed your typical ceiling, so, as in like sealant. And so there is a much greater need to seal the entire building envelope at both of those campuses so that it is no longer, there is currently water that gets in behind the system, the exterior system. So Nolan, whatever you would like to add to clarify my construction knowledge.
Starting with, what is an envelope?
Oh, the whole building on the outside.
So what's technically is happening at Deerwood Elementary. It is starting to fail. In the bond, it was patchwork. We could go in and do the patchwork, but you'll see it. The rest of it will start to fail as well. So what we'd like to do is correct it from the beginning so that we can stop water penetration into those buildings for a lot of costs, both of these buildings, one. Happening at Umbel Elementary, that system is flashing all those windows. The only call for patchwork.
So it's basically all the windows?
It's all the windows.
That you're having to do more around because of the...
All around the entire building.
Between, after it's started and moved by, I have to try and extract the windows out of that building. Go see what was there. Actually, there was no flashing. It's all one building. We've got some water coming down, like in behind the stucco and the brick on top of those windows, and there are hollow metal frames. That water just gets to the top of the frame, and it's just going down the frame. It goes inside of somewhere in the windows. It's like a fish tank. It'll just catch it in half of the window as it fill up. But eventually, it's all the way to the bottom. It comes out, and the paint on the brick starts healing all of the structure. And this is a big problem that the sister pool of this very design, they all have this problem. It just works.
We call them the fish atriums. Where does it fit in the timeline?
In the timeline, basically, there is no timeline for it. It was a, we have some P1 work. Not sufficient, but we'd like to do it right now. So it was Kenny as the maintenance director has prioritized this as a top project for him under P1. Like to take care of the building.
That likely to be done this summer, or?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm good. Okay, great.
Okay. All right, so we have a...
You got...
Mr. Scarfo?
Madam President, Ms. Greer, do any, I know those buildings are old. Do any of the architects or contractors on those buildings, because there's more than one of them, still do work for the district?
But we, we have flashing in all of our windows for me.
And casing.
And we need a system which we no longer...
So it wasn't a, you said it wasn't a fail on their part with how it was designed, although I would say it was probably not a very good design.
Time back then was appropriate.
One else? Ms. Toomey?
Are there any environmental concerns related to the consistent water leakage that we're having to? Is that included within this particular?
That's exactly what we want insured. Right now, we do not have environmental problems in those buildings.
However, if we open one of these windows up, if we do have a problem, we're going to
Okay, we have a motion and we have a second. All of those in favor? So Action Item 7A, 29, oops, sorry.
No, you're good. I was just going to mention that we have a little presentation on that.
Okay. 2019-2020 Compensation Plan. Okay, Dr. Fagan?
All right, I got excited there.
He sure did. I have to make a motion first.
Yes, we need a motion.
Ben? Madam President, I move to approve the proposed 2019-20 Compensation Plan. I have a, we have a motion and we have a second. And so we have a presentation.
We have a mini-presentation. As you know, this is a very interesting budget year because House Bill 3 was signed, when did you say? I think today. And those of us, those districts with a fiscal year start of July 1st are legally required to have their budgets passed by June 30th. We are working really closely with experts who don't know a lot more than we do about all of the aspects of this bill, but we feel very positive about the outcome for Umbel ISD and what we're going to be able to provide to our employees this year. So Rick Gardner has worked closely with Mike Seal and has prepared multiple compensation packages, as you know, and this is where we are today. We would like to recommend, I'm not sure what the name is anymore, Rick, but we would like to recommend this compensation. Yeah, 2B2, is that it? 3B2?
3B2.
Yeah, those names. So we would like to recommend this one. You will see that it is slightly different than last week in one really important way, and that is that we have made modifications in the amount on actual salary schedule versus stipends in order to provide the district a little more flexibility, given the unknowns of this particular budget situation in House Bill 3, but we have not reduced the compensation package. It is just a change in the approach of disseminating it. So with that, I would like to introduce Rick Gardner to go over this and answer any questions.
Thank you, Liz. Good evening, Board of Trustees, members of the audience. I'm pleased to present to you the 2019-20 Compensation Plan and where we landed. From our June 4 budget workshop, I shared with you two models, and so where we landed in light of what Liz mentioned, of the 10 other models that we developed prior to this one, as well as navigating through House Bill 3 and trying to meet its obligations and requirements while balancing our own finances, this is the compensation plan that we've come up with. So what this plan looks like is basically on the SEP pay system, we are applying a 3.9% structure adjustment to pay scale entry of moving it from 54.4 to 56.7. In the pay range itself, steps 1 through 5 will experience a $2,600 increase, or steps 6 through 26 plus will experience an increase. This plan also, like I mentioned to you last week, takes into account that lower portion of being sensitive to trying to close the gap at least 98% of the market. I am projecting a 3% market movement, and so that's where that close the gap piece Midpoint pay system looks at a 1% structure adjustment to all the midpoint pay scales to increase starting salaries, with the exception of the administrative instructional pay scale. That will have a structure adjustment of 4%. Trade models, some will have a 6%, and like I mentioned last week, will have a 9.5% structure adjustment. In that structure adjustment, there will be a 4% general pay increase off that new midpoint for administrators, non-certified professionals, office professionals, and auxiliary, and though, like I mentioned last week as well, police will experience a 10% general from $3,600 to $7,800. Instructional program professionals, like counselors, social workers, and OTP teams will experience a 4%. With the exception of the counselors, they will experience a 4.9 general increase, and from $3,400 to $3,700, depending upon the employee on. This takes into account House Bill 3 counselors. Efficient to those particular components, also an incentive pay for teacher, librarian, nursing counselors of $1,400. We're still working through how we will be administering that. It could be half of it is in December, and the other half is in May, or it could be all in December. We're still working through those dynamics. That's what the incentive librarian, nursing counselor on top of the general increase. So the estimated cost of this particular package is $18.7 million. The interim pay to bachelor degree market, I think, will hold third advantage above the market, and the estimated cost to close the gap, we would need an additional $500,000 to close the gap completely, and again, if the market is moving at 3%. So this particular slide here just shows you the overall cost impact of where those figures are coming from. So I guess I would just like to say that this appears to be also the largest compensation package that this district has put forward. I know since I've been here in the last six years, and I tried to look back as well, and I could go as far back as 2009, 2010, before my time. So I want to thank the board in advance, Dr. Fagan, Mike Seal and his team, my own team, for putting this package together and making it happen if approved. And I would just want to let Dr. Cunningham know that this particular model does not have the fluff as we talk about.
Very straightforward.
Yes. It's 2019-20 Compensation Plan.
We're happy to answer any questions about this particular model.
Not necessarily a question, I just a couple of comments. Thank you, Rick, and Mike Seal, and Dr. Fagan, and all the team members that worked on this. I think it's very important to understand that this is a very aggressive package. The, when you look at the HB3 rules as we know them, the new money, the LBB is projecting us to get $22,896, 822. We were kind of using a round figure, 24 million, because in the second year of the biennium, we're looking at 24,281. But part of HB3 says you have to use 30% of that new money for compensation, 75% of that 30% for teachers, nurses, librarians, counselors. That number comes out to $6.8 million, not 18.7. I want to make sure... I want to make sure everybody understands that. We're spending roughly 81% of all the new money that the state has given us and putting it back in the classrooms in the hands of our teachers. That's aggressive, all right, and it's well due, it's well deserved, and I wanted to make sure people understood that we're not putting that state money in our pocket, we're putting it where it matters most, and that's the folks on the front line working with our kids. So, Rick, thank you very much.
Dixon?
Rick, Dr. Fagan, Mr. Seal, I'm sorry, Mr. Gardner, Mr. Seal, Dr. Fagan. Honestly, I just feel like standing up and giving you a standing ovation, honestly. I'm really appreciative, appreciative for all the teachers in our district, the counselors, the librarians and all the personnel, the police. This is truly impactful, I think, for our district, and it says a lot about what we value. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
I'm President, ma'am.
Yes, you may, Mr. Cunningham.
Mr. Seal, thank you so much. Rick, thank you. And Dr. Fagan, of course, thank you, but then I also want to thank our finance chair, Mr. Sitten, for staying on top of it because ever since the session has opened up, you have been there, you and Ms. Morrison. Just want to thank you. And of course, I look forward to our new board member because I've just met her, well, been knowing her, but we just talked in the last couple of weeks and she has enlightened me on some things on House Bill 3, but we still have some work to do. But to your team, Dr. Fagan, I just want to say thank you. I like, I like it.
Conrad?
Thank you, Madam President. I do want to also thank our state legislatures again, in particular, our own representative, Dan Huberty, for really leading this charge and not only that, but then ultimately giving us that local control that we requested. So, I do want to commend you all for making this recommendation and adjusting accordingly each presentation to ultimately bring this forth. Of course, we want to ensure that it does meet all the requirements of House Bill 3. As stated here, that would be our biggest concern, I think, going forward, but we're excited to bring this opportunity to our teachers and, and help us, help you do your job better, get those last recruits in here once we get this approved, so, thank you.
One more data point I forgot to mention, because this is big. I mean, we're always...
It's big.
We're always talking about a 2% raise, a 3% raise, God, can we get, get here, can we get there? When you add in the incentive, the stipends, it's an average of like 7.3% pay increase for our teachers. Teachers, counselors, librarians and nurses, that, that, that core group. That's huge. I mean, that's, that's two, three times more than what we normally... Yes, kudos to our state representative, Dan Huberty, Senator Brandon Creighton, and all those that worked on this to get it where it is today.
Last but not least, I just want to say a huge thank you, Mr. Seal, huge thank you, Mr. Gardner, Dr. Fagan, and Mr. Sitten. Mr. Cunningham, you put quite a few hours in on this too, and a huge kudo to Representative Huberty and Brandon Creighton. But, Mr. Sitten, I cannot thank you enough for being on the phone, hours and hours and hours with those two gentlemen. And never, never waver. This man never wavered. And Mrs. Dixon, I'm like you, let's stand up and holler, as educators. How long has it been? Has it ever? Have we ever given this much? And finally, our teachers and our staffs are going to see something, and I am just so excited and so proud for them that there's not enough words. So, thank you. I'm excited.
Martina wants to clap. Can I have one?
You certainly may.
So, we may or may not need this, but Stephanie, there's been some conversation about ensuring that the motion says something to the effect of we would like to pass this compensation package all-inclusive of all the requirements of House Bill 30, or 3.
House Bill 3.
So, I just want to make sure that we are publicly stating that we believe that this compensation package meets all the requirements of House Bill 3 and is all-inclusive of all items that we may or may not know about, and so that's an important part of, of moving through ambiguous space. So, just so that we're all on the record that way, I too want to say as an educator, somebody whose mother was an educator and I think started out at like, I don't know, $7,000 back in the day, that it's been way too long for teachers, counselors, other education professionals to see professional salaries. The work they do is very personal to and unique to every single child. They have to understand every single child and apply their professional expertise to the support of that child and their growth and, and really preparing them for their life. And so, to see this, this compensation package so supported by this board is an incredible thing, and it is really going to make a difference. It puts us on the right path. I do want to thank Representative Huberty, who took all of my calls and said, "It's going to be okay, it's going to be okay." Senator Creighton, you all are wonderful partners in Austin, and you, you listen to our feedback and you make adjustments and you consider things that, that worry us. So, thank you so much for all of that. Thank you to this board. Thanks to Rick and his team. You know, Rick, they say WD-40 is named that because it was actually the 40th iteration prototype that was the good one that they used. So, 10 is really not that many. I mean, it took us 10, but, but we got to the right destination, and, and that's what matters. So, I'm very excited that Umbel ISD is leading the way in this conversation and, and going for it and doing what's right for our employees and our students because it's going to, it's going to pay off for us for a very long time.
Well, we have a motion and we have a second. All those in favor? It is a 7-0, okay. Congratulations! I'm so excited! Well, you made me a little nervous. You said your mother made $6,000. I made $6,600 the first year I worked. That was a long time ago. Okay, so we now go to eight informational items, proposed revisions to CH Regulation. Session or? Just information items. And then we have our financial services reports. Okay? If nothing else, we will now adjourn to closed session for our, the time now is 8:18 PM. We will now adjourn into closed session pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551.074 for discussion of the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment duties or discipline of public employees, including discussion of the superintendent's annual evaluation and goals. Okay? We stand, we are now back in session. Do I gavel?
Yes, please.
Y'all are more than welcome to stay.
You're more than welcome to stay. It could be a...